So, members of the Board of Trustees, please respond present when you hear your name. Chairperson Thompson.
Present.
Trustee Arvinides.
Present.
Trustee Berger.
Present.
Trustee Clark. Yeah, trustee Lorraine, trustee Cortez Vasquez. Trustee Ferrer.
Here.
Trustee Kim.
Present.
Trustee Lenaris Garcia.
Present.
Trustee Mojica.
Present.
Trustee Oberfell. I think we lost them on the turnover. Trustee Palacio.
Present.
Trustee O'Donnell Tormey.
Present.
Trustee Sunshine.
Present.
Trustee Vivalo. We lost him too. Trustee Wilken.
Present.
Trustee Burke.
Present.
Okay, and just for the record, we have no student trustee pending an election by the USS. Corey Provost's term was only 45 days, and they will be having another election for the new chair, but you have a quorum bill.
Okay, this public meeting of the City University New York's Board of Trustees is now called to order.
Pursuant to the New York State Legislature's recent extension of the suspension of required in-person meetings, under the open meetings law, this meeting is being held remotely via video conference with access to the public session available on the CUNY Board of Trustees website. A copy of the calendar, the agenda of items is also available online at the CUNY Board of Trustees website. Additional items may be added during the meeting. As a reminder, please mute so we can ensure that everyone can hear. I'll now take a roll call attendance for members of the Chancellery. Members of the Chancellery, please respond present when you hear your name. Chancellor Matos Rodriguez. There we go, you're muted, okay.
Present.
Thank you. General Counsel and Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs Derek Davis.
Present.
Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Stan Lemmons.
Present.
Executive Vice Chancellor and Chief Operating Officer Hector Batista.
Present.
Senior Vice Chancellor for Institutional Affairs, Strategic Advancement and Special Counsel Glenda Grace.
She's present.
Senior, you're still muted. It's okay, Glenda, we got it. Senior Vice Chancellor and Chief Financial Officer Matt U. Sapienza.
Present.
Senior Vice Chancellor for Labor Relations Pamela Silverblatt.
Present.
Vice Chancellor and University Chief Information Officer Brian Cohen.
Present.
Vice Chancellor for Communications and Marketing Maite Uco.
Present.
Vice Chancellor for Risk Audit and Compliance Richard White.
Present.
Vice Chancellor for Human Resources Management Dorian Gloria.
Present.
Interim Vice Chancellor for University Advancement Andrea Shapiro-Davis.
Present.
Interim Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs Denise Maybank. Don't see Denise. And trustee Vivalo has now joined us, and trustee Vivalo, I will mark you present. Okay, it's all you, Bill.
Okay, thanks, Gail. I'd like to take a moment to thank Corey Provost, the Vice Chair for Legislative Affairs for the University Student Senate, who served as the interim chairperson for the University Student Senate and as a student trustee pending the election by the USS. His 45-day term has expired, and USS has scheduled an election for December 19th. So let me just thank Corey first. Pursuant to New York State Legislature's reaching the extension of the suspension of required in-person meetings under the open meetings law, the Office of the Secretary of the CUNY Board of Trustees accepted written testimony, statements, and video from concerned individuals via email at hearings@cuny.edu and Dropbox. No testimony was received. Trustees have been busy with the important work of search committees for CUNY Law, a new university provost, and a vice chancellor for university advancement, and will soon be launching three additional searches for the Newmark Journalism School, McQuarley Honors College, and the School of Professional Studies. Let me thank all of my colleagues, all of you, for the work that you are putting in on these search committees and for the search committees that you've been on. This has been an unprecedented time of change in CUNY, and particularly over the last couple of years, and it almost seems at times like a full-time job, and I'm sure that Henry would nod at that, and so would some others. But I can't say thank you enough, and how important this is not just for, you know, for CUNY today, but for the CUNY of tomorrow. So let me start out again by thanking my colleagues for all the work that you've put in, all the hard work in these search committees. It isn't over yet, but I can see a time when it will be slowing in the not-too-distant future. So again, thank you all so much. Trustees have also been very busy with other events around the university as well. Trustee Sandra Wilken met Queen Diambi of the Congo several years ago through an introduction by their mutual friend Sam Stathis. Because of this connection, CUNY was honored to welcome Queen Diambi, an alumna and valedictorian of the College of Staten Island class of 1992, to an event last month at Roosevelt House in her honor. Trustee Wilken said it perfectly that day, and I quote, "By Her Majesty's presence, we are realizing CUNY's dream of having such a distinguished and inspirational alumna in the CUNY family. This shows how life is so unusual, and what happens is, a conversation changes the world." Trustee Clark joined the chancellor, President Eames, and Queen's elected officials at a recent ribbon-cutting at York College for the completion of seven capital projects totaling $29.2 million in campus improvements, which include two new science buildings, two new lecture halls, new escalators and elevators, and a faculty dining room. I'd also like to take a moment to recognize the heroic efforts of one of our trustees, Michael Arvinides. On December 7, 2021, Senator Diane Savino awarded Michael the prestigious Liberty Medal for his heroic and quick efforts to save the life of a local poll worker. The American Red Cross also awarded Michael the National Life-Saving Award for his brave act. The gentleman collapsed during his break outside on Election Day in June, and Michael put his Eagle Scout training to use and performed CPR, reviving the 78-year-old man, who later underwent extensive surgery and has made a full recovery. It is an amazing and incredible story, and Michael, we are all incredibly proud of you and that selfless act. Thank you, my friend. Thank you all, and you can see, we're all applauding.
Take a CPR class.
You are 100% correct. Yes, if you haven't, and I have not, we all should. Thanks, Michael.
Bill, before you move on to the chancellor's report, I just want to note that trustee Oberfell has joined us, and I skipped over. I apologize, Vice Chancellor Atala. I see that you're present. You will be marked present. I apologize for missing your name, and Lorraine is now entering the meeting as well, so we will mark Lorraine as present as well. And I see Denise Maybank has joined us as well. Just wanted to be sure the record is straight. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Gail. That concludes my report. Let me now ask Chancellor Matos Rodriguez for his comments.
Thank you, Chair Thompson. Tough to follow that story from trustee Arvinides, so I'll do my best in my report, but it's great to be here, and I want to thank Chair Thompson for attending also our December meeting of the Council of Presidents, the first fully in-person meeting of all the presidents at the cabinet that was held at the Graduate Center. So we all appreciated your presence and your support, Chair Thompson, which was the support of this entire Board. Since the weeks since the last board meeting have been flush with good news for CUNY, and we certainly have a lot to be thankful for. I want to take most of my remarks to highlight these accomplishments and end the year on a high note. Giving Tuesday, which we call a CUNY Tuesday, affirm the kindness and generosity of the CUNY community with another record-setting $2.5 million for the university and the colleges. In the last two weeks, the funds have grown to a total so far of $2.8 million from 5,229 donors. My gratitude goes to CUNY's so many friends and supporters for their overwhelming and helpful assistance, including many of you in this board. Funds raised from CUNY Tuesday will directly support the university's programs and students. And for those of you who are listening to this broadcast, or the broker of this meeting, I have not yet given or want to increase your gift. You have until the end of the year to do so. Despite the challenges of the pandemic, the CUNY class of 2021 set a new benchmark for success. The university conferred an all-time record 59,295 degrees for the 2021 academic year, an accomplishment that affirms the vitality of the CUNY mission and the resilience of our students, faculty, and staff. I was going to make a reference to the visit for Queen Diambi, but Chair Thompson already chronicled that wonderful event. But I was also immensely proud to welcome the legendary Rita Moreno and Toni Kushner to CUNY and give them a tour of the archives at the Center for Puerto Rican Studies at Hunter's College-Silberman School of Social Work in East Harlem. They had learned about the valuable collection early in the development of Steven Spielberg's remake of West Side Story from CUNY retired professor of history Virginia Sanchez Coro, who's a meritite at Brooklyn College, who served as a movie's historical consultant. It was an emotional visit for Rita Moreno, who was surprised to see a photo she had never seen before of her younger brother Francisco when he had moved to the mainland US at the age of 22. We are also so pleased to have distributed a third round of the Student Emergency Relief Grants through the American Rescue Plan Act. We just finished disbursing around $240 million to approximately 267,000 students with an average award of $716. Every CUNY student is getting an award that I know they greatly need. With this last round, since the pandemic began, CUNY has distributed about $475 million in federal grants directly to students and will disburse another $160 million in the spring 2022 semester. We are exciting about expanding our in-person menu of courses for next spring while keeping flexible online and hybrid options for our students. There are many good reasons for CUNY to be mostly in-person next semester, as many of the country colleges and universities already are. But to me, the key factor is that we continue to see evidence that for most students, being physically on campus and taking in-person classes can be essential to achieving the learning they are capable of. We have reiterated to our students CUNY's vaccination mandate to ensure the health and safety of our community. Students taking in-person or hybrid courses must be fully vaccinated when classes begin in the spring. I encourage those who have not yet gotten the vaccine to get it, and those who have to upload proof of vaccination in CUNY first. I am happy to report that CUNY's weekly testing program numbers continue to reveal a university that is operating generally free of the virus. Since August 25, the university has conducted 87,016 tests of unvaccinated individuals, of which 217 have been positive, a rate of 0.2%, considerably lower than the city's and the statewide figures. CUNY's random COVID-19 testing program of vaccinated individuals ramped up in the last week of November, adding to the measures that we have taken this fall to keep CUNY's campuses among the safest places to be in all of New York City. Still, with cases on the rise in the country and the growth of the Omicron variant, we'll remain vigilant and ready for additional safety measures should they be required in the spring. As many of you know, one of my key priorities, career engagement. We, CUNY, and the New York City Health and Hospitals announced an expanded partnership that would place new, diverse, highly-trained nurses throughout the New York City health and hospital system. The program will draw from 100,000 CUNY nursing students who graduate each year. The collaboration also includes ongoing skills development and research opportunities. I was also pleased to attend a New York Jobs CEO Council CUNY Roundtable alongside JP Morgan Chase Chairman and CEO Jamie Dimon to provide an update on the progress that has been made more than a year since its launch in August of 2020. Among the highlights, so far, 820 CUNY students have completed micro credential programs, and four CUNY community colleges have partnered with seven jobs council companies to redesign associate of applied sciences degrees with embedded credit-bearing paid apprenticeships. For the next phase of the collaboration, we are aiming at another 725 students out of a pool of 2,600 applicants participating in micro credentials starting on January 3. Earlier this month, I participated on a panel at the quarterly meeting of the Board of the Carnegie Corporation of New York. The panel featured Sheena Wright, the president and CEO of United Way of New York City, and Chancellor Lester Young from the New York State Board of Regents. The meeting was to reinforce the importance of braided learning, working with schools and employers to break work-based learning opportunities into academic experiences. And we are proud of the support of the Carnegie Corporation to our efforts in this front. I also participated in a fireside chat with Jeff Aronson, co-founder and managing principal of Centerbridge Partners. The meeting was to familiarize Centerbridge external partners and employees in London and in New York City with CUNY and our mission of promoting economic mobility. Mr. Aronson and the Centerbridge Foundation have been strong supporters of CUNY's efforts to prepare and connect students to careers in the finance industry, investing over $2.8 million across three different initiatives, including the recently announced CUNY Futures in Finance. Based on the previous track record of hosting, mentoring, and hiring CUNY students, I am proud to say that Centerbridge decided that all their summer interns this year will come exclusively from CUNY. I also want to update our board on our efforts to fine-tune our strategic direction. As the continuation of visioning efforts that have taken place over the last few years, we have begun a phased launch of our strategic roadmap mapping process that will result in the creation of a five-year strategic plan and inform the development of our next master plan. This process will articulate a vision of a future CUNY that would build on a shared history, record of achievement, and reputation as the nation's premier engine of upward social and economic mobility. The plan is being led by a steering committee composed of diverse university stakeholders, including faculty, students, staff, and university office administrators. The majority of the work will take place in the spring, and I look forward to the Board's engagement and participation in this important process. If I could continue with a round of good news, I want to congratulate Hunter College student Dave Basnet, a DACA recipient who immigrated from Nepal, on being named as a 2022 Rhodes Scholar, the most prestigious academic award available to American college graduates, and one of only 32 winners in the US. What a marvelous and well-deserved honor for Dave. Six CUNY community colleges qualified for the 2023 Aspen Prize for Community College Excellence. The biennial prize comes with a $1 million award and is considered the highest recognition for community college achievement in the nation, and the only community colleges in the state of New York included in this group where are CUNY campuses. In late October, I was happy to join Presidents Monroe, Coco de Filippis, and uptown elected officials at the ribbon-cutting ceremony to mark the reopening of CUNY in the Heights, an educational, career, and personal development opportunity center that serves the needs of residents from Inwood, Washington Heights, and the Bronx. Ostos and LaGuardia Community College were also the recipients this month of $1.6 million from the New York Community Trust to help our community college prepare unemployed New Yorkers for good jobs in high-demand sectors. I also recently joined President Eames at York College and Queen's elected officials to unveil seven capital projects funded by $29.2 million from New York State and New York City that were completed during the pandemic. The projects include two new science laboratories, two updated lecture halls, an updated faculty dining room, as well as upgraded elevators and escalators. We thank Governor Kathy Hochul for the $21.2 million provided by the state in the critical maintenance program for these projects. By the time that we meet again, we'll have a new administration in City Hall. I would like to take a moment to once again congratulate Major-elect Eric Adams, who takes office on January 1. We relish our ties to Adams, who attended three CUNY colleges, Queensboro Community College, New York City Tech, and John Jay College of Criminal Justice, and holds a degree from the last two. I thank him for the honor of allowing me to serve as a coach of his transition committee and for topping so many distinguished CUNY leadership for the other committees in the transition effort. We are also grateful for the fantastic opportunities granted to nearly 50 CUNY students to work in the Adams transition through paid internships funded by the Petri Foundation. The civic engagement internship program will equip students with the experience they need to launch careers as policymakers and public servants and help to put the voices of CUNY families front and center in policy development. I would like to recognize some of the other elected officials who prevail in their races and are CUNY alumni. Congratulations to public advocate Jubani Williams, as well as to Vanessa Gibson, who made history by becoming the first woman Bronx Borough president. Cheers also to the first majority-women city council and to Shohana Hanif, who will be the council's first Muslim woman, and is a Brooklyn College graduate. I would also like to salute 40 members of the CUNY Public Safety Team, who two weeks ago were honored in a special ceremony for Public Safety Medal Day. Congratulations to the medal recipients for the many heroic deeds in 2021, and thank you to all public safety staff for their ceaseless service as essential workers throughout the COVID-19 pandemic. Turning now to CUNY transition leadership, we have a resolution at the end of the meeting honoring President Bill Fritz. I will save my remarks about President Fritz to that moment, but we also today bid farewell to Dr. Christopher Rosa, who, after more than 30 years of service to CUNY, is moving on to his new role as president and COO of the Viscardi Center, a network of organizations which provide services that empower childrens and adults with disabilities. At CUNY, Chris established and oversaw a long line of programs that supported the personal growth of students with disabilities, student veterans, LGBTQI+ students, undocumented students, and those who struggle with mental health or food and housing insecurity. Good luck in that new position to Chris. We love you, we miss you, and we know you do a great job at the Viscardi Center. This brings me to the end of my report. I wish everyone a joyous holiday season and acknowledge the great distance that we have traveled this fall and throughout 2021. The pandemic might not be completely in the rear mirror, but it is gratifying to be able to take stock of all the work we have done as a university, a city, and a country to get where we are standing right now. We approach the holidays with optimism, hope, and gratitude to all those whose great efforts made it possible. Thank you to hold, and happy to take any questions if there are some.
Okay, thank you, Chancellor. Thank you so much, and let me echo to everybody a happy and healthy holiday season. This is, be careful. Let's now turn to the items requiring a vote today. Given that board members are participating remotely and we cannot see everyone on the screen at the same time, either Gail or I will read the resolutions and ask for members to respond only if you'd like to abstain or oppose an item. Otherwise, your vote will be recorded as a yes vote. If you're voting no or abstaining, please state your name and vote. Additionally, if you wish to second an item or have any questions, please state your name first for the record, and let's try to avoid speaking over one another. For clarity and coordination, I'll ask the secretary to read all of the items. Gail. You're on mute.
I'm done it. And I think trustee Clark may have just joined us, so for voting record purposes, we'll note that. Item number one, approval of minutes of the regular board meeting and executive session of October 25, 2021.
I'd like to move that. Do we have a second?
Or a second?
Any discussion on, okay, any discussion on the item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item number two, Committee on Audit. Item 2A is a resolution to approve the university's fiscal year 2021 audited financial statements. The fiscal year 2021 audited financial statements were presented and approved by the Board Committee on Audit on October 27, 2021. University's external auditors, Grant Thornton L.L.P., gave the university a clean or unmodified opinion on the report.
Like to move the item. Do I have a second?
We're in seconds.
Any discussion on this item? Questions, discussion? All right, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item number three, the Committee on Fiscal Affairs. Item 3A is a resolution to transfer Mackenzie Scott gift funds on behalf of Ostos Community College to the Ostos Community College Foundation. Mackenzie Scott selected Ostos Community College as one of the recipients of her groundbreaking philanthropic initiative and awarded the college a gift of $15 million. By resolution of July 6, 2021, the Board of Trustees accepted the gift on behalf of Ostos and approved the deposit of the gift in a university account, while the college determined next steps with respect to the allocation for investment and the use of the funds. Ostos has now determined that they would like to transfer $13 million of the gift to their foundation, where it'll be placed in an endowed account and to be used for student basic needs, scholarships, and other activities that support students' career innovation and academic excellence initiatives, campus-wide initiatives, and institutional capacity building, as approved by the Ostos president.
I'd like to move the item. Do I have a second?
We're in seconds.
I again would like to thank Mackenzie Scott for the historic grants that she made to CUNY. I can't say enough how grateful we are. Any discussion on this item? Comments? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item 3B is a resolution to transfer the annual spending allocation related to Mackenzie Scott gift funds for the Borough of Manhattan Community College that are invested in the university's long-term investment pool to the Borough of Manhattan Community College Foundation. Mackenzie Scott selected BMCC as one of the recipients of her groundbreaking philanthropic initiative and awarded the college a gift of $30 million. By resolution of July 6, 2021, the Board of Trustees authorized and approved the transfer of $15 million of the gift to the Borough of Manhattan Community College Foundation, Inc., on behalf of BMCC, to be placed in a restricted account and used only for a specific enumerated project approved by the BMCC president. The remaining $15 million of the gift was transferred to the CUNY Long-Term Investment Pool for investment. BMCC funds maintained in the CUNY Long-Term Investment Pool are subject to an annual spending allocation designated to an annual spending allocation designated by the University Board Subcommittee on Investments. BMCC desires to transfer funds up to the approved yearly spending allocation from the funds remaining in the CUNY Long-Term Investment Pool on an ongoing annual basis to the BMCC Foundation, Inc.
I'd like to move that item. Do I have a second?
Rare seconds.
Any discussion on this item? Okay, we'll now move to a vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item 3C is a resolution to authorize a contract with Project Muse for library subscription services. Since its inception in 1995, the university, on behalf of all of its campus libraries, has subscribed to Project Muse, a collaboration between the Johns Hopkins University Press and the Milton S. Eisenhower Library at Johns Hopkins University. The collection provides access to over 800 traditional humanities and social science journals for more than 200 of the world's most distinguished university presses and scholarly societies. The current project, sorry, the current contract with Project Muse will expire on December 31, 2021, and the university is seeking approval from the Board of Trustees to authorize a new contract with Project Muse, AKA Johns Hopkins University, for $1,254,600 over a period of five years.
Like to move that item. Do I have a second?
Rare seconds.
Any discussion on this item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item number four is the Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research Activities. Item 4A is a resolution regarding the establishment of the School of Business and related academic departments at Lehman College. The Herbert H. Lehman, excuse me, College Department of Economics and Business has evolved over the past 20 years, both in terms of undergraduate and graduate program offerings and in the number of students served. Lehman College has undergone a rigorous process to determine that the current departmental structure is no longer sufficient to administer the programs offered and address the needs of the students. As a result, the college proposes to establish a school of business to house the three distinct departments in place of the current Department of Economics and Business.
I'd like to move that item. Do I have a second?
Second, O'Donnell Torme.
Discussion on the item? Questions? We'll now move to a vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item 4B is a resolution regarding the establishment of a bachelor's program at Applied Management and Entrepreneurship at the CUNY School of Professional Studies. There's an increasing necessity for baccalaureate-level education for many jobs that previously did not require that, that level of education, while many associate applied science or AAS degree holders have limited options to pursue baccalaureate education due to a lack of transferability of technical course credits. In keeping with the mission and vision of the School of Professional Studies to respond to the needs of adult learners and evolving workplaces, while leveraging the school's history of quality online program development, the proposed program will enhance the school's vision of introducing new opportunities that will expand the possibility and promise of public education and positioning our students to grow personally, excel in the workplace, and enrich their communities.
I'd like to move this item. Do we have a second? Any discussion on the item? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item 4C is a resolution regarding the approval of the actions in the CAPRA Dashboard. Routine academic matters, local academic policies, and course inclusions in the university's general education program were presented to the Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research in summary form. Introduced in October 2019, the CAPRA Dashboard makes it possible for trustees to interact with this summary data.
I'd like to move the item. Do I have a second for this?
Janice Garcia, second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now move to a vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item number five is the Committee on Faculty Staff and Administration. Item number 5A is a resolution to approve the Committee on Faculty Staff and Administration Report. The December report contains actions entered into the CUNY system of record between August 28, 2021, and October 15, 2021. The report contains a total of 62 actions, including 24 appointments and reappointments with tenure, 17 fellowship leaves, and 18 ECP regular and interim appointments.
I'd like to move the item. Do I have a second for that?
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Angelo. You do it.
I second it.
Any discussion on the item? All right, we'll now move to a vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item number 5B is a resolution to transfer faculty to a newly established school of business at Lehman College of the City University of New York. The programs in the areas of accounting, business, and economics have grown and are projected to continue to grow to the point where they warrant the creation of a school of business. The students studying in the areas of economics and business will be better served by having a school with three distinct departments focused in the areas of accounting, management, and business innovation, and finance, information systems, and economics. Therefore, Lehman College proposes that the 23 current Lehman College Department of Economics and Business faculty be transferred to the newly established Department of Accounting, Department of Management and Business Innovation, and Department of Finance, Information Systems, and Economics. You're muted, yeah. You got muted.
Yep, I'd like to move the item. Do I have a second?
I'll see a seconds.
Any discussion on this item? All right, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item 5C is a resolution to appoint regular members of the Executive Compensation Plan. During the COVID-19 pandemic, the Chancellor Institute of Vacancy Review Board, VRB, to monitor all staffing expenditures, including appointments to the Executive Compensation Plan. Depending on the needs of each university's central office, school, or college, appointments were made on an interim basis pursuant to a search or pending a search waiver. The VRB has now determined that these certain appointments may be presented to the Board of Trustees as regular members of the Executive Compensation Plan effective December 14, 2021, superseding all prior appointment dates.
Like to move that item. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion on this item? All right, we'll now move to a vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item 5D is a resolution to name the Otto and Fran Walter Memorial Lecture Series at the Graduate Center.
I'd like to move that item. Do I have a second?
You're not a second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Items 5E through 5H are resolutions to accept gifts to Hunter College from the estate of Evelyn Morgan Besser, the estate of Adele Paley, the Norma P. Schmidt 1991 Trust, and the estate of Saul Stadmeyer.
Like to move the item. Do I have a second?
You're not Clark's second.
Any questions or discussion on the item? Okay, we'll now move to a vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item number 5I is a resolution to name the Ava Hess Endowed Prize for Excellence at Hunter College.
Like to move the item. Do I have a second?
Janice Garcia, second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item 5J is a resolution to accept an anonymous donation of $180,000 to the City College of New York. On September 1, 2021, Dr. Vinod Menon, Chair of the Physics Department at City College, came to his office and opened a cardboard box, which had been received by the mailroom several months earlier. The box contained $180,000 in cash and a letter from an anonymous donor. In the letter, the donor expressed their wish that this gift be used to support junior and senior City College students double majoring in physics and mathematics. The anonymous donor identified themselves as City College alum, having long ago received a BS in physics and mathematics and an MA in physics from the college. The anonymous donor stated that the City College gave him an, quote, "excellent educational opportunity", unquote, "and a basis to eventually earn a PhD in physics and astronomy", which led to, quote, "a long, productive, immensely rewarding, to me, scientific career."
I'd like to move that item. May I have a second for that?
You're not Clark, I second.
Any discussion on this? I will admit that is absolutely astonishing that $180,000 in cash in a box.
Is that the first, Mr. Chair?
I don't know. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask that question, and I'd also like to thank the Chair of the Physics Department for bringing it in at that point. I mean, God bless them all. Geez, it's amazing. Is that Chancellor, can you tell us, is that the first contribution in cash like that anonymously? And I hope they, I hope they've registered the package and just didn't drop it off, my God.
Clearly, clearly in a box, I think is a first.
I told you, I think we need to bronze that box. You guys think I'm serious? I mean, I'm kidding, I'm so serious. And we have to put that in some kind of display case as to the most generous gift.
Honest mailroom, an honest.
Absolutely.
Yes, everybody.
The way I tambo, Myra and I are together, you know?
Amazing.
Person spent $90. The person spent $90 to send the box.
We like that.
Of course, that brings up how big was the?
They didn't send us the bill, Adri.
I know, I know.
How, now the only other question is, and how big was the box that $180,000 fits in, okay?
It wasn't that big, and it was an old box. I mean, it just had tape on it. You would never know.
Didn't have any more money to spend on anything, you know, new. That's what he spent all his money on.
But, but I think we need to emphasize, which was said at the committee meeting, that this was all vetted with the police, and there was nothing shady about.
I.
Went to the FBI, went to the police, it was all confirmed. And we tried to trace the person, but it, he, he or she didn't give their real name or real address. So we were given the.
But it was real cash, and so we took it.
And, and, and some of those, and some of those details are in the full version of the resolution.
Yeah, right.
For the public record, it gives the, is a good point that the transition is trying to make.
Yeah.
Any other discussion on this item?
No, but I just want to acknowledge, I want to acknowledge our Chancellor and Adri, because they were like, we are not sending this back. We're going to do all the due diligence necessary. We're going to keep this money.
It actually says a lot about, you know, how people feel about their alma mater. You know, I'm really proud.
Yeah.
I think it says what people feel about their CUNY alma mater. There we go. Um, all right, let's, let's move to a vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is definitely approved.
Okay, item six, Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. Item number 6A is a resolution to authorize HVAC upgrades to the Razzran Hall Building at Queens College. Razzran Hall was built in 1970, and the existing building HVAC systems are 50 years old and in very poor condition. The construction is anticipated to commence in February 2022 and be substantially completed by May 2023 for a not-to-exceed amount of $38,750,000.
Like to move that item. Do I have a second?
Oberfell seconds.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item 6B is a resolution to authorize improvements to the underpass at 159th Street, Jamaica, Queens, also known as the key pedestrian gateway to York College. The project will renovate the public space around the Long Island Railroad underpass at 159th Street and between York College and downtown Jamaica. The project includes upgrades to electrical systems, replacement of pavers, overhead lighting, and a new gate. The project is estimated to cost $3 million. University applied and has been awarded a $1.5 million downtown revitalization initiative grant towards funding the project, and CUCF will enter into a grant agreement with the Department of State to receive these grant funds. The underpass is owned by the Long Island Railroad, which requires the university to enter into a construction licensing agreement as well as a permanent easement for use of the underpass.
Like to move the item. Do I have a second?
Oberfell seconds.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now move to a vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item number 6C is a resolution to authorize a lease amendment with 137 and 138 Realty LLC as landlord to extend the term of the lease at 137 East 25th Street, New York, for Baruch College. This 10-year lease extension will expire on July 31, 2032. The annual base rent for the leased space during the first five years will be $549,000 or $90 per rentable square foot for the retail spaces and $1,878,000 or $61 per rentable square foot for the upper spaces. During the last five years, it will be $610,000 or $100 for rentable square foot for the retail spaces and $2,63,600 or $67 per rentable square foot for the upper spaces. The real estate tax base year is reset to 2022, and in lieu of operating expenses, the base rent will be increased annually by CPI but no less than 2.5%. Universities receiving two months free rent. The landlord is providing up to $300,000 for certain improvements to the demised premises to be performed by the landlord.
I'd like to move this item. Do I have a second?
Oberfell seconds.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item number 6D is a resolution to authorize a lease amendment with 25 Broadway Office Properties LLC as landlord to extend the term of the lease at 25 Broadway, New York, for City College. This 12-year lease extension will expire on January 31, 2034. Annual base rent during the years 1 through 5, the extension term will be $1,956,848 or $43.50 per rentable square foot. During the years 6 through 10 of the extension term, the rent will be $2,204,265 or $49 per rentable square foot. And during the years 11 and 12 of the extension, the term will be $2,429,190 or $54 per rentable square foot. The real estate tax base year is being reset to the average of the tax amounts for the fiscal years ending in June 30, 2022, and June 30, 2023. And the base amount for operating expenses is being reset to $14.25 per rentable square foot, and the university is responsible for increases based on CPI. Universities are receiving five months of free rent, and the landlord is providing up to $1 million for certain improvements to the leased space to be performed by the landlord.
I'd like to move the item. Do I have a second?
Oberfell seconds.
Any discussion on the item? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item number 60 is a resolution to authorize a new lease agreement with 11 West 42th Realty Investors LLC as landlord for Gutman Community College at 11 West 42nd Street, New York. The university seeks to provide Gutman Community College with interim expansion space to allow the university additional time to locate, plan, and construct a permanent location for the college. The leased space is comprised of 21,500 rentable square feet. The lease will commence after the substantial completion of certain minor work to be performed by the landlord at the landlord's cost and will expire on June 30, 2027. The annual base rent will be $1,182,500 or otherwise $98,541.67 monthly, which is also $55 per rentable square foot.
I'd like to move the item. Do I have a second?
Oberfell seconds.
Any discussion on the item? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item number seven is a resolution to confer the title of President Emeritus of William J. Fritz in recognition of his distinguished service to the College of Staten Island.
Like to move that item. Do I have a second? Like to move that item. Do I have a second? Discussion on the item, Chancellor, is there anything you'd like to say?
Let, let me yield the floor first to the distinguished gentleman from Staten Island, who I'm sure would like to say something and then I'll go after.
Okay.
Well, uh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chancellor. And certainly I would, I'd be remiss if I didn't, uh, point out the poetry and, uh, uh, of a geology, distinguished geology professor becoming the head of a, the largest institution of higher learning on the rock. Uh, certainly my partnership with President Fritz goes back to before I joined this distinguished body as a trustee. He is a creator and an innovator of the town to gown. For those who don't know, the College of Staten Island is the geographic cultural heart of Staten Island. And, uh, he has certainly brought that institution out into, uh, the community. It serves, uh, the public. It serves the whole city. And through his work with the supercomputer that is now on campus, it serves all of CUNY. So I want to, um, commend my friend and partner, Phil Fritz, on his retirement. And, uh, just pass along my good wishes and thank him for his years of dedicated service to the College of Staten Island and to all of CUNY.
And I would, I would just add that, um, an incredible debt, uh, to Bill, uh, he had served with distinction first as provost, interim president, then president. Uh, when I became chancellor, he had said that maybe it was time for him to retire. I suggested that since we had a number of searches going on, that maybe he should stay one more year. Covid came and the good soldier that he's always been and the dedicated man that he is, he stayed on. Do very, very difficult times for leadership and did it with great distinction. Broke fundraising records at, at CSI. I think the entire community, uh, involved in philanthropic, uh, and, and civic engagement in, in, in Staten Island like, uh, no other president before. So again, a, a great debt of gratitude that we all owe, uh, Bill Fritz, and we wish him the very best in this, uh, next phase. And I also want to thank, uh, Bonnie, who was, uh, is his great partner in all this endeavor. And I would miss doing, uh, waffles with him as he welcomes students as he used to do every year in Staten Island. So thanks to Bill.
Well said, Chancellor. Uh, any other comments? Okay, we'll now move to a vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. The Chancellor has asked the board to consider three additional resolutions. There's a three or four. Cause I'm gonna ask the secretary to read each resolution for the record. And we'll first vote to add the item and then take a vote on the item itself. Secretary, please read the resos. You're on mute.
Somehow got muted. Item number eight is a resolution to appoint Timothy G Lynch as interim president of the College of Staten Island. So I will read the resolution for the record. Whereas Timothy G Lynch is currently the provost and senior vice president for academic affairs and a professor of history at Queensborough Community College, where he has served since twenty seventeen. And whereas, as chief academic officer at Queensborough Community College, Dr. Lynch is a responsible for all matters related to academic programming, including assessment and accreditation and to ensuring the college's continued trajectory of academic excellence, managing seventeen academic departments and nine hundred faculty. And whereas Dr. Lynch served as interim president of Queensborough from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty, where he oversaw several successful reaccreditation efforts, including the campus middle state self-study and implemented the campus response to COVID-nineteen, including a pivot to fully online education. And whereas Dr. Lynch previously served as provost and vice president for academic affairs at SUNY Maritime, where he was responsible for the management and supervision of the academic departments, programming, student support services, accreditation, admissions, assessment, athletics, the Career Center, continuing education, graduate studies, institutional research and effectiveness, the library, online learning, student affairs, and the Student Health Center. Whereas Dr. Lynch was previously a tenured professor at SUNY Maritime College. Whereas Dr. Lynch served on the president's cabinet at SUNY Maritime College and as Director of Institutional Effectiveness, has, and has experienced working with middle states accreditation, has been a faculty member and has numerous publications. Whereas Dr. Lynch was previously the chairperson and director of the Maritime Policy and Management at the California Maritime Academy, Cal State University. And whereas Dr. Lynch holds a PhD and a master's in philosophy and history from the Graduate School of the City University of New York and a BA in history from Brooklyn College. And whereas the terms and conditions of employment for staff in the executive compensation plan, ECP, section two point four point three concurrent, which states concurrent appointments to positions in ECP and faculty that for titles for presidents and other persons with responsibilities in academic areas and in other appropriate instances, appointments may be concurrently, uh, may be made concurrently to a position in the ECP and to a professional title in an academic department, i.e. assistant professor, associate professor, or professor. And whereas section two point four point three further states that, quote, "Once appointed to positions in the ECP, staff who have underlying professorial appointments will immediately be placed on leave from that professorial appointment," unquote. And whereas section six point two point B of the bylaws of the Board of Trustees states that, quote, "A distinguished person of proven record appointed to the title of associate professor or the title of professor who had tenure in another accredited institution of higher learning may be appointed with immediate tenure by the board in its discretion. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approve the appointment of Timothy G Lynch as interim president at the College of Staten Island at the annual rate of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars effective January one, twenty twenty-two. And be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approve the appointment of Dr. Lynch as full professor with tenure in the History Department at Queensborough Community College with immediate tenure effective January one, twenty twenty-two and placed on leave from this position during his term as interim president at the College of Staten Island. Explanation reads as follows. Dr. Lynch replaces College of Staten Island President William Fritz, who announces retirement in December twenty twenty-one. Dr. Lynch has served in this transitional role previously and is well-prepared to guide the College of Staten Island during the university's search for a new president. A native New Yorker and first-generation college student, excuse me, Dr. Lynch earned degrees from Brooklyn College and the CUNY Graduate School and University Center, all in history, his research interests focus on immigration and ethnicity and on America's relationship with the sea. The Chancellor highly recommends this appointment.
All right, let me make a motion to add item number eight to our agenda. Do you have a second? Okay, item number eight has been added to our agenda. I now present item number eight. May I have a second for that? Any discussion on the item?
Welcome to the rock.
Yeah, not yet.
Let, let me just add that, uh, first in, in, in Provost Lynch will have, um, a seasoned administrator, having served as provost in both a four-year and a two-year institution. Remind our board members that CSI awards both, you know, degrees, associates and baccalaureates. So that experience will be very helpful at CSI. He performed, uh, did a great job the two years he was interim president at, at Queensborough Community College. Is a distinguished historian, maritime historian, uh, and, uh, so we feel very confident that he'll be able to do a stellar job at the College of Staten Island. And he's a true, uh, great, uh, CUNY, uh, social mobility and academic, uh, success story. You know, sort of coming as a, as a student at Brooklyn College and then getting the PhD at the graduate center.
Right, any other comments? Discussion? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item number nine is a resolution to appoint Sandra Palmer as interim provost and vice president for academic affairs at Queensborough Community College. And the resolution reads as follows. Whereas Dr. Sandra Palmer currently serves as dean of faculty in the Office of Academic Affairs at Queensborough Community College. And whereas Dr. Palmer has twice stepped in to serve an interim and acting chief academic officer roles when needed, first as interim vice president of academic affairs from September twenty sixteen to April twenty seventeen. And more recently as acting provost and vice president for academic affairs from September twenty eighteen to August twenty twenty. And whereas Dr. Palmer, Palmer, sorry, holds a BA in art history from University of California Davis and an MA and PhD in art history from the University of Chicago and also earned an MBA in management from Adelphi University. And whereas Queensborough's current provost and senior vice president for academic affairs will be appointed as interim president at the College of Staten Island effective January one, twenty twenty-two. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approve the appointment of Dr. Sandra Palmer as interim provost and vice president for academic affairs at Queensborough Community College and an annual salary of a hundred and ninety thousand dollars effective January one, twenty twenty-two. The explanation is as follows. Dr. Palmer has extensive experience with community college faculty and academic initiatives and academic affairs, faculty development and management, student learning, innovation and retention and strategic planning and accreditation. The president of Queensborough highly recommends this appointment.
Okay, I make a motion to add item number nine to our agenda. May I have a second? Item number nine has been added. And let me now make a motion to approve item number nine. May I have a second for that? Any discussion on the item? All right, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved.
Item number ten is a resolution to authorize the City University of New York to extend the engagement of Arnold and Porter LLP to provide legal services through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. So that resolution would read as follows. Whereas on or about October twenty twenty-one, the City University of New York, the university, was asked to respond to pre-litigation investigative requests concerning the use of grant funding, which necessitates a large-scale review and subsequent production of documents, witness testimony and other responses. And whereas the New York State Office of the Attorney General does not represent the university in these types of pre-litigation investigative matters. And whereas Arnold and Porter LLP is one of the nation's notable law firms possessing experience in the field of internal corporate investigations, litigation and corporate law-related matters and has handled complex internal high-profile investigations. And whereas the university previously approved the retention of the law firm of Arnold and Porter LLP in January twenty twenty-one to respond to these investigative requests for a term of six months, subject to extension contingent upon outcome such matter at an amount not to exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And whereas on July sixth, twenty twenty, the university extended the term, the original letter of engagement for an additional six months through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, or alternatively until such time as the matter requiring Arnold and Porter LLP's legal services concludes in either case for an amount not to exceed an additional five hundred thousand dollars. And whereas the matter requiring the legal services of Arnold and Porter LLP is not concluded and there remains funds available to the university for expenditure under the extended original letter of engagement as amended. And whereas the university believes it would be in the best interest to amend the original letter of engagement a second time to extend the term for another six-month period through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Or alternatively, until such time as the matter requiring Arnold and Porter LLP's legal services concludes. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York authorize the general counsel or his designee and that they hereby are and each of them hereby is authorized to sign and deliver a second extension of the existing contract with Arnold and Porter LLP through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two to provide legal services to CUNY permitting the university to make additional expenditures pursuant to any remaining fund amounts available under the contract previously approved by the Board of Trustees on July sixth, twenty twenty-one. Together with any and all agreements, documents and other instruments related thereto and to take any and all such other actions as such officer so acting may deem necessary or appropriate and that such signature by such duly authorized officer of the university shall be conclusive evidence of his or her authority to perform all such acts and to sign and deliver all such documents and instruments on behalf of the university. And be it further resolved that any subsequent material changes to the terms and conditions of the aforementioned contract shall be submitted to the university Board of Trustees for its consideration and approval. The explanation is as follows. The law firm will continue to represent the university and the Board of Trustees to minimize potential liability of the university and protect the university's interests. A contract and any renewals will be subject to review and approval by the Office of the Attorney General and the Office of State Control.
Okay, let me, I'd like to make a motion to add item number ten to our agenda. Do I have a second? Item number ten has been added. Let me now, uh, move item number ten. Do I have a second?
Lena Garcia's second.
Any discussion on this item? All right, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item has been approved. Is that the last item on our agenda or is there any other additions?
That's all that I have.
Okay, um, again, let me wish everybody a happy and healthy holiday season. Looking forward to all of you, uh, to venture, in the near future, seeing everybody in person. Uh, I'll tell you, as the Chancellor mentioned earlier, I was at the COPS meeting, which is great to see everybody and see everybody in a room. So with that, have a wonderful holiday season. Being no further business, I have motion to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second?
Merry Christmas to all. Merry Christmas.
Everybody, take care.
Happy holidays.
The holidays.